Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 17th, 2023. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviaak.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rauer.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. First item this evening is police department promotional thing. Hi, Tanya. Chief Steiner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening it is my great pleasure to be here to recognize the accomplishment of Tanya Harmoning, who has been promoted to the rank of captain after nearly 22 years of service to the Coon Rapids Police Department. Captain Harmoning was hired as a patrol officer December 3rd, 2001, became a cops officer from 2014 to 2018, where she specialized in community mental health. She was promoted to patrol sergeant November 25th, 2019, and since 2021, she has served as a sergeant of the Investigations Division. Her promotion to captain became official on September 18th, 2023, but Captain Harmoning has been offsite at the Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command, where she's set to graduate in about a month, and then she'll be returning to her regular duties. Although Captain Harmoning possesses many attributes that we believe will make her successful in her new role, her passion and commitment to the wellness of others are what have always stood out to me. I wanted to give you a couple of quick examples before she is given the oath of office and before her son Wyatt formally pins on her captain's badge. As the council knows, the Coon Rapids Police Department has an embedded mental health professional. It's the first of its kind in Anoka County and evolved from a partnership with the Blaine Police Department, People Incorporated, and other community stakeholders. But what you may not know is that several years ago, then cops officer Harmoning was instrumental in laying the groundwork for this position, long before most of us had ever heard the phrase "embedded mental health professional" or "embedded social worker", and long before there were calls to integrate social workers into police departments. That program now serves as a model for other agencies to follow. Also, a few years ago, then Sergeant Harmoning pitched the idea of a mental health wellness program that required all members of the police department to have an annual checkup with a mental health professional that specializes in dealing with law enforcement and first responders. This concept was not what you would call an easy sell for cops, and I can tell you that I wasn't so sure how I felt about it at the time, but Captain Harmoning is very persistent, and in 2022, her persistence paid off and the plan came to fruition. We're now two years into this program, and I will tell you that not only has it been well received, it is utilized more than I ever imagined it would be, and I've had a couple of veteran officers come to me, and not the ones that you would expect, and tell me that they believe it's the best thing that we've ever done for our people at the Coon Rapids Police Department. None of this would be in place without Captain Harmoning's incredible dedication to the wellness of this department. So, without further ado, I'd like to invite Captain Harmoning and her oldest son Wyatt up to the center. Wyatt is going to be pinning her captain's badge on her, and then followed by the mayor issuing the oath of office. It's like looking for the ring.
Excellent. All that mental illness stuff came from serving with Pat Carlson, didn't it? Yeah. Come on, come on.
I learned a lot from Pat.
What was necessary? All right, raise your right hand. Perfect.
I, Tanya Harmoning, do solemnly swear.
I, Tanya Harmoning, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police captain.
The duties of a police captain.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
We could have him sign just about anything at this point, you know.
Now, I may be stealing the mayor's thunder, but he usually invites everybody that came here to stay for the whole council meeting if you'd like, or people here for the badge pinning are welcome to step outside for photographs and to congratulate. Captain Harmoning, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I'm sure some people will say.
They're all over here.
Thanks for hanging in there. Oh, here I thought former council member Johnson was going to stay there for a minute, but he's gone too, so. Oh, that's right, we had two of them back there. We had two former council members Johnson's back there, didn't we? All right. We're up to number two, approving the minutes of the October 3rd meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second. Hang on a second here. Actually, I think I need a second from somebody else.
Second.
Thank you. I need a motion by Carlson and a second by Grisgoviaak to approve the minutes from the October 3rd, 2023 council meeting. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Abstained.
Two abstentions, councilmembers Armstrong and Novak. Well, I feel like I need to be retrained tonight. All right, we have three, four, five items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is item three, that's to approve the final payment for Project 1826 and the recycling center expansion, and we've got here a list of the contractors and final payment amounts. The recycling center expansion are outlined on the attached spreadsheet. Net change orders totaled $4,156.57 for minor adjustments to the scope of work. And I encourage everybody to get over and check out the recycling center. It's very nice. So, we're looking to approve the change orders and final payments totaling $53,795.85. According to the attached spreadsheet, all of the dates and amounts are reasonable and accurate according to the project file. No liquidated damages are recommended. The next item on our consent agenda, which is item four on this evening's agenda, approve final payment for Project 22-66, the Public Works remodel. Again, we've got a summary of the contractors and the final payment amounts for Project 22-66, Public Works remodel. They're all outlined on the attached spreadsheet, and the net change orders total $21,509 for adjustments to the scope of work. So, we're looking to approve the change orders and the final payments totaling $19,967.48. According to the attached spreadsheet, all of the dates and amounts are reasonable and accurate. According to the project file, no liquidated damages are recommended. The next item on our consent agenda, which is item five on our agenda tonight, approve fiscal agent agreement with Anoka County related to the violent crime enforcement team and adopt Resolution 23-106, accepting grant funds. This agreement will allow Anoka County to act as the fiscal agent to distribute HIDTA grant funds to pay overtime costs incurred by Coon Rapids Police Officers currently assigned to the AHNVCT. Love all the acronyms. By acting as the fiscal agent, the county will not receive payment for administrative costs or expenses related to this agreement. Okay. HIDTA is the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, and HNVCT is the Anoka Hanipin Narcotic and Violent Crime Task Force. So, we're looking to approve the fiscal agent agreement with Anoka County to distribute the HIDTA grant funds to pay for overtime costs incurred by Coon Rapids Police Department staff and adoption of Resolution 23-106, accepting the grant funds. Next on our consent agenda is item six, which is to adopt Resolution 23-105, supplementing approval of conduit bond financing Mississippi River Apartments. At its September 19th meeting, the council approved a resolution authorizing the sale and delivery of conduit housing revenue bonds for a rehabilitation project at the Mississippi View Apartments, located at 11010 Mississippi Boulevard. Well, it's actually 11010 and 11020. Mississippi View Apartments is a 96-unit apartment community comprised of two three-story apartment buildings. The buildings were originally constructed in 1972 and most recently renovated in 2007 of the 96 units. 93 are covered by a housing assistance payment, or commonly known as Section 8. The project team has been seeking an additional source of authority for tax-exempt bonds beyond the city of Coon Rapids authority. Since the September approval of the initial bond resolution, the parties have identified recycled bonding authority through a different project in the city of St. Paul. Therefore, the council has asked to authorize the additional tax-exempt bonds in a joint powers agreement with the city of St. Paul. The attached resolution essentially restates the previous resolution and adds provisions related to the recycled bonding authority. So, we're looking to adopt Resolution 23-105, supplementing and restating a resolution authorizing the sale and delivery of conduit housing revenue bonds for the Mississippi View Apartment Project. And the final item on our consent agenda, which is item seven on this evening's agenda, is to adopt Resolution 23-107, accepting the donation of a senior services van. For many years, the city of Coon Rapids had an ongoing arrangement with Coon Rapids Chrysler whereby they provided the city with a van for use by the senior center. Coon Rapids Chrysler is no longer able to provide the city with the use of a van, but has offered to donate the existing van to the city. The van has been evaluated by the city's fleet maintenance supervisor and was found to be in above-average condition for its age and mileage. The vehicle, based on condition and mileage, has a value of approximately $4,500, and the staff recommends acceptance of the van as it is currently utilized by the senior center, given that it is in above-average condition. So, we're looking to adopt Resolution 23-107, accepting a 2012 Chrysler van from Coon Rapids Chrysler, and that is our consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rauer.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rauer and a second by Geisler. Is there any discussion or questions on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank Coon Rapids Chrysler for being willing to donate the van to the seniors and, you know, as they've been using it. It's a nice thing that they can do for the city, and I do appreciate it.
All right, sounds good. Sounds like it came right out of Lake Wobegon. It's in above-average condition.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted. We are up to item eight, consider adoption of ordinance 2288 restricting parking on 131st Avenue between Cricket Lake Boulevard and Arrowhead Street. And this was introduced at our last council meeting. I got, I received no feedback on this. I don't know if anybody else did. Seems like a good project. Anybody have any questions of anyone? Anybody need a presentation?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rauer.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2288 restricting parking on the south side of 131st Avenue between Cricket Lake Boulevard and Arrowhead Street to be effective from May 1st to September 1st of each year.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rauer and a second by Carlson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item nine is to consider adoption of ordinance 2289 to amend licensing of rental dwellings, short-term rentals. This also was introduced at our last meeting, and I only received one phone call, as expected, from the Governmental Affairs Director of the Realtors. And it's my first year not serving on that committee too. And of course, they're opposed, but I explained to him our reasoning, and seemed we were okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2289 amending Chapter 12-900, licensing of rental dwelling to prohibit short-term rentals and authorize summary publication.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. And as a clarification, I should say, they weren't okay with it, but he accepted the explanation. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviaak.
Your point about getting feedback on this. I did get feedback on this. This isn't Ward 1, but the only feedback that I had was from two residents in that area, both in favor and in support of this changing of the ordinance, so I support this as well.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Oh, Councilmember Ray Rauer, go ahead.
Yeah. For me, I will be voting no, because I do want the homeowner to have the choice to be able to do this, and it's something I've used myself on many vacations.
Probably most of us have. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. One opposed. Councilmember Ray Rauer. Item 10, consider introduction of ordinances revising fees for 2024. Ms. Hanson, anything you want to, any highlights you want to hit on this?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So, we're introducing two ordinances related to fees, adjustments to fees for next year. The first one relates to certain license fees, service fees, and related charges within the city code. So, the fees that, for most fees, that there's a recommended change. We applied a 3.5% adjustment factor, and then if it, rounding to the nearest significant dollar amount, then that was the recommended increase. There are certain fees that are set by statute that did not change. The second ordinance relates to permit and billing inspection fees. We're not recommending any changes for next year. And then the third action items would be because there's fees related to alcoholic beverages that require a public hearing, the council's asked to set a public hearing for November 7th for these items. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions on this one? We've got two different actions, so we've got two introductions, and then we need to set a public hearing, which will require a motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, first, does anybody have any questions on this or before we, all right? In that case, then we will consider an ordinance to revise certain fees, service fees, and related charges effective January 1st, 2024, introduced, and we will consider an ordinance establishing permit and inspection fees for the Building Inspections Division effective January 1st, 2024, also introduced. So, both of these items will come up at our next council meeting, so if you have any questions or comments, make sure you reach out to staff or your city council member or myself. The next is dealing with alcohol, and anytime we have alcohol licensing changes, we always have to have a public hearing, correct?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for November 7th, 2023, at 8:00 PM regarding the fee increases for an on-sale 3-2 malt liquor and off-sale 3-2 malt liquor tavern license and on-sale intoxicating liquor license, micro-distillery cocktail room license, and brewer taproom license.
Second.
So, a motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson, and I guess what I would say is the fees for that are proposed to increase by $5 for the sale of alcoholic beverages from 175 to 180 for off-sale 3. Do we have any off-sale 3-2 malt liquor licenses?
Mr. Mayor and council members, the state law requires you, if you want to do other types of things like strong beer and not a full intoxicating, to get that 3-2, and it comes, then the strong beer comes along with that. So, the answer to that is yes.
Okay. All right, well, then I would think so, sure.
I'm not sure they're, you know, actually selling 3-2, but we follow the law and make them get one.
All right. But, hang on, and then I was just gonna, and then $30 from 8:15 to 8:45 for on-sale 3-2 malt liquor licenses. Again, I don't know if we have one of those, but kind of the same thing again. $10 increase for $340 for a tavern license, $500 increase from $10,700 to $11,200 for on-sale intoxicating liquor license, and $30 from 8:50 to 8:80 for a micro-distillery cocktail room license, and $30 increase from 8:50 to 8:80 for a brewer taproom license. And then, of course, we've already got a motion and a second to set the public hearing regarding those fee increases for November 7th. Councilmember Geisler.
And I just wanted to make a note that it's at 8:00 PM versus our normal council time of 7:00 PM, because that Tuesday is the election day for the school board, so our council meeting will start at 8, not 7, so that's the time change.
Right. Okay. Any further discussion on this? We have a motion and a second to set that public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 11 is to consider an introduction of an ordinance restricting parking on 95th Lane from Foley Boulevard, 125 feet northwest towards Norway Street. Mr. Hammer, I sent you an email and you responded to me, and so you think we're good then? Because I know you're not supposed to park across from a driveway, although, can you park across from your own driveway? Because I know you're exempt from parking within five feet of the end of your driveway, if it's your own driveway. I'm trying to remember.
But I wouldn't say probably not, but I think we're trying to address that anyways.
Certainly. Well, except 125 feet brings up short of the driveway.
Mr. Mayor, you have an ordinance in front of you. It was passed out because inadvertently it was not attached to the memo, and based upon our back and forth today, would a property owner complain about parking in front of their own driveway? No, but the idea was that's where the roadway widens at his driveway. So, based upon some feedback and relooking at it, we handed out an updated ordinance. It was not attached. We are requesting 150 feet. It, you know, is it 152, 153? Approximately 150 feet north to get past that driveway and eliminate parking on both sides of the streets.
150, 151, whatever it takes. Got it. Okay. So, this would be an introduction of an ordinance restricting parking on 95th Lane from Foley Boulevard 150 feet towards Norway Street. Does anybody have any questions on this or need a presentation or anything?
No.
Okay. Then, in that case, we will consider the ordinance restricting parking on both sides of 95th Lane from Foley Boulevard to approximately 150 feet northwest towards Norway Street, introduced. And we are on item 12, consider approval of an agreement with Anoka Hanipin School District 11 for police department support. I was gonna, saw the county attorney was here, I was gonna send him a text and offer him an opportunity to come in, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Well, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say that this is a tough one for us. I mean, we all support safe schools. We all support what our officers do in our schools, but, you know, with the way the legislative acted, I think it makes sense, and I'd like to make a motion that we table this item 12 for the time being. Second.
We have a motion and a second to table item 12. There's no discussion on that. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. Two opposed, councilmembers Geisler and Ray Rauer. All right. Open mic. Somebody here for open mic? Open mic is a, I don't have my, I accidentally carried my directions home. But you have three minutes, sir. If you would start with your name and address.
My name is Derek Leffert. I'm the head of Government Affairs for Gateway Fiber. I actually do not reside in the city, but represent our interests in front of local and state government officials, and we began our construction project here a couple of weeks ago to bring high-speed internet to the residents and businesses of Coon Rapids. We had been over in Blaine. I think we started construction in Blaine in September, so really kind of my, my reason for being here was just to kind of introduce who Gateway is and let you know that we are laser-focused on being a partner, a business partner with the city and its residences. Just real quickly about us, we're not a big multinational corporation. We're a small internet service provider, and we're growing, and Coon Rapids and surrounding areas are certainly in that footprint where we hope to continue to grow. You, we all know why broadband is important. I think that was made even more evident throughout COVID with, you know, healthcare, education, remote work, things like that. So, we are here to serve that need, and we want to work collaboratively with the city and others to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to serve your residents. I could tell you all about how fantastic we are, but I know we're limited to three minutes there, so I would just ask if you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. I'll leave some business cards. I know that the process of the installation of fiber optic lines or any utility really is disruptive, so we do anticipate that you're going to get some complaints from constituents. I will tell you that our focus is making sure that we return the areas that we build in to as good or better condition that they were before. Every house that we pass has the potential to be a customer for us, and so we want to make sure that, that we're focused on keeping the residents, minimizing that disruption as much as we possibly can. So, if you, your constituents have any concerns whatsoever, any restoration concerns, any concerns about construction, feel free to reach out to me, and I'll get with our team to make sure that we get those resolved. Sometimes in the summertime, you get complaints from, you know, we don't throw seed or sod down when it's, you know, 95 degrees and no rain expected, so there are some issues like that that, you know, take a little bit, but we want to make sure that we're a good, strong partner for you guys, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here. I look forward to working with you guys and as well as the staff, and encourage you guys to contact us if there's anything we can do for you.
Very good. We have an opportunity to ask clarifying questions. Does anybody have any clarifying questions they would like to ask? I just wanted to, you said you started construction in Blaine in September. Did you start in Coon Rapids then? I missed that. I'm sorry.
No, I think we started here. I'd have to double-check with our construction team, but I believe we started here a couple of weeks ago, so, you know, there's a process to get it here. We will have some customers lit, but obviously, the construction window is getting very, very narrow here, so we'll do our, we'll do our best to get as much in as we possibly can, but we do anticipate lighting the first customer relatively quickly. anticipate lighting the first customer relatively quickly. It's a long process. As you can imagine, it's very expensive to do those things and we've got to get back hall to our office, which is based in Missouri. We do have a couple of people on our leadership team that do have some Minnesota roots, so we, we were based in Missouri, but we will be standing up an office here. We're currently in the process of looking for space that will accommodate all of our needs here, so.
Wow, that was a long answer. Councilmember Carlson, you have a question?
No, short question.
Sorry, I work in politics. I'm known to speak law.
So, just to clarify, you've got the green light, you're moving forward, everything's going well. Just what part of town have you started at?
I will get back to you on that. I'm not 100% certain. I know that it's just, we engineer certain neighborhoods at a time, so I'm not 100% sure where they started at here, but I'll get that information.
Oh, resident home, that's what I want.
Okay, yeah. And were there, was there a concern from the resident?
Yeah, they're kind of waiting for you coming.
Yeah. That's a, that's a good problem to have. You know, a good problem to have is for folks to be reaching out to us saying, hey, when are you coming here? Unfortunately, you know, we want to get to everywhere as quickly as we can, but you know, there's a process.
I gave my stand answer.
Ooh.
Well, and if you do have those sorts of questions or concerns to your point, feel free to reach out. I'll provide you with my email address. Actually, I'll send you guys a follow-up email here this evening and those sorts of questions, feel free to defer those to me and I'll gladly take that off your plate.
Thank you.
Excellent.
You bet.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is.
Is she here for open?
The, oh, what?
Is she here for open mic?
No.
Okay.
You're not here for open mic, are you? She's always here. She's just a really good constituent.
And you're talking Coon Rapids, you're good.
All right. Just to remind us that there's people out there. I like it. So, I have an open mic response for Mr. Derek Lind, Anoka County Election Integrity Team. Boy, this was a well-written, well-researched letter from the city clerk. And I'm not sure how much of it to read. I guess, but he had a lot to say and I guess we have a lot to say in response and I would encourage folks to look into this. I don't even know where to start and stop. All these paragraphs are, seem important. But I would say that we have a high level of confidence in our election here and I guess the, one of the takeaways is, Anoka County and the city of Coon Rapids have complete confidence in the ballot counting machines and as the council is aware, after every general election, Anoka County selects a random sampling of precincts for post-election review and those precincts that are selected are subjected to a hand count to verify that the machine count matches the paper ballots cast. And in every instance where precincts from Coon Rapids have been part of the post-election review, the votes cast on the machine match the paper ballot count. Additionally, per Minnesota Rule 8230, a hand count cannot be done in tandem with the use of optical scan machines. All right, I should have stopped earlier, because, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, just, you know, I will reiterate what you said. Our city clerk, Ms. Lenzmeyer, did a great job, you know, highlighting each of the different points that Mr. Lynn brought up. And our elections are secure. And, you know, if you've got any questions, look at that response that's part of, you know, you can go to our city website, look at city council meetings and you can see the packet and it's right there to see all the details. The other thing I would encourage you, next year, it will be a big election next year, become an election judge. I spent, I want to say 16 to 20 years as an election judge before I came to council. It is very rewarding, very educational, and you really get to understand how the system works and understand how secure it is and how, you know, it can defray any of those, you know, misconceptions and, you know, conspiracy theories out there about how the elections work. Learn it for yourself, become an election judge, and it's a great experience.
All right. Anything else on that? Otherwise, we are in other business. And we have a really big thing coming up this Saturday. Saturday over at Sand Creek Park, October 21st, from 10:00 to 1:00, Rocky's Pumpkin Patch. There will be celebrity bingo callers.
Oh, I'm excited, Mr. Mayor. I've got those cheesy Halloween jokes already.
Are we saying that Mr. Carlson is a celebrity?
Every year, he's the bingo caller with all of his dad jokes. It's really a great event. I don't know, I don't remember how many thousand pumpkins there are this year. Do you recall?
There'll be 1,200 this year, Mr. Mayor.
1,200? I thought there was more than that.
I thought there was more too, but I was corrected.
Well, thanks for correcting me. Because every time I tell the story, it gets more.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going till I was corrected.
All right. Yeah, bring the kids out in costumes, lots of events. Rocky will be out there and plenty of community organizations and lots and lots of candy.
And fire trucks and the police car.
Lots of photo opportunities with police and fire and be a great day. I think the weather's supposed to even be nice, so.
And then, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, I may tap Mr. Hammer on this one, but it's fall, it's street sweeping time. And so, when we sweep the streets, we also use the fire hydrants and when that happens, we're using hydrants in its areas that maybe water hasn't gone through for a while and so there may be some brown water. It is still safe, it just may not look pretty. So, Mr. Hammer, did I miss anything or anything you'd like to add?
No, you're hired. You're speaking our education promoter. Appreciate that. Thank you.
The one thing was, safe to drink, not safe to wash your whites in.
Yes, good point. And you also forgot trash cans out behind the curbs.
Oh, yes, yep. You know, make sure that your trash can does not, your trash cans should never be in the street anyway. They should always be behind the curb, so.
And this is a really good time to remind folks, the leaves in your yard need to stay in your yard until you pick them up. It makes me insane when I watch a drive-by and I see people blowing them or mowing them into the street and it just makes me crazy. So, that's all I can do to not stop and blow them back into their yard. All right. Other business? Mr. Stanwell?
Well, Mayor, Council, we're talking about streets. It might be worth a reminder that November 1st isn't too far away and overnight parking on streets is therefore prohibited until April. And of course, if it snows over three inches, I've got that right. It's been a while since I've had to do this reminder, so we're on the theme. I thought that might be a good time to bring that up.
And that's overnight parking from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM from November 1st to April 15? April 1st?
April 1st. April 1st.
All right. Very good. I like to think ahead. I'm already thinking the April weather. Skip right over the weather. All right. Okay. Any other business to come before council?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Novak to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.